Sorry about that. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the public comment portion of the meeting. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? All right, attendance. Let Director show that Patty Malinski is not here tonight. Traveling for work. And we have an FFA student presentation of--
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Ty Thompson. I'm the Dundee FFA Ag Science teacher. Tonight, I have two of our officers here with us, and they're going to present the plan of activities. So these are all the activities that we are planning to do throughout the year, and they're going to introduce themselves and take it away.
Hi, I'm Kylie George. I'm serving as a historian this year.
This is our WFA plan of activities. These are all of our officers, some of which currently are not here.
So for any of them activities, I'm one of them. I was seventh hour. We work on different activities and events. We coordinate them, and it helps us learn how to do things independently and work amongst ourselves.
Officer meetings, we do these at least once a month, and they help us plan and just collect all of our thoughts together to make sure all of us are thinking the same thing and help make sure that we can make things run smoothly like some of the other activities we later have planned.
Our FFA representation at cultural areas. So we have a hallway display in our hallway with a cute little jacket. We put up things that we have done throughout months. So we have photos of harvest day up currently with the broiler contest. And, you know, just spreading the awareness that, you know, agriculture is important on us.
The broiler contest, we have zoology students, which are typically freshmen, but it doesn't matter. Like, who you are, if you want to do this. We do that each year, and you have a group of chickens you raised from a young age, and then you raise them into meat chickens, and you go to a contest and butter them and learn, like, the whole process of how to hold them.
Staff breakfast, one of my favorites. What we do is a bunch of students in the FFA program will all come together and we'll cook breakfast for the staff, not only teaching us food safety and importance, but making sure that Mr. Schroeder has a great day and everybody else. But yeah, it's one of my favorites.
And we have Pinkout, Pinktober, which we just did, and it raises money for families in Dougie that has, like, breast cancer or that needs the help. And we do t-shirt sales and t-shirt contests. So it's great for students to get involved while still raising that money. We also do a big bake sale at lunch, which that was very successful this year. And it's just a good time. A lot of it helps to put that right.
Harvest Day, another fun one. We have different stations. Our main goal for Harvest Day is to show the importance of agriculture and tractor safety around Harvest Day, because you'll have bunches of combines and different equipment moving around and animals. So we like to show that to all the younger elementary students who may not have immediate access to such things.
Then we do Ag Alibates, which was just hosted this year in assembly that we did the whole school together for. And it's like a bunch of fun games and stuff that had things to do with agriculture, while still having fun and raising awareness. And it's just a fun time together.
So this one is on our next to do, decorating the school office for holiday season. So me and some other students, we plan on decorating the office for Christmas or Festivus if they are not too festive. And, yeah, we plan on doing that pretty soon after Thanksgiving.
Then we have the maple syrup collection, which I'm an ecosystem student, so we are currently doing this right now. And it's tied to Mr. Thompson teaches us what are sugar maple trees and how big they need to be and how to tap them and how to collect the maple syrup. And we just make money with flyers and mark business part of it and how to do it.
So feed the farmers. We do this either around harvest time or springtime, whenever they're more at the co-op. So we'll make signs in order to get this sponsored, and we'll feed them hot dogs, burgers, you know, simple farmer-esque foods.
We do the Ag Eggtime each year. This is around Easter time. We put Easter eggs around the school that have egg facts in them and candy. And then there's always people making them somewhere, and that has the cash prize in it. All the eggs have egg facts in them as well, and any student can participate in this.
Adopt a family. So our FFA chapter will adopt several families, and we will get together gifts for them. You know, it'll be toys, clothes, anything. The kids will have wish lists, and we'll try and complete them to the best of our abilities. And we do this around December, starting December, and we finish it out around Christmas.
FFA versus youth, we get our FFA program to raise money and buy items such as, like, medical things, like bandages and other items, and granola bars, like, whatever you think these families and military troops will need overseas, we get it all together and they're presented to them.
Proficiency state degree and outstanding junior awards. So qualifying members of the chapter, they will fill out certain applications. They'll receive outstanding juniors award-- hello, junior awards. I got mine last year. They're good on applications to colleges and stuff, but, yep, we'll get that started around December, around now, too.
We have leadership contest, which that was our freshman group last year, and they did green hands. And the better you do, the further you make it. So you start local, and then they made it all the way to states with the status you. It looks really good on colleges as well, knowing, like, you had a group that did that well. And it teaches you, like, public speaking and just how to work together with groups, which you need to know in the future.
The FFA greenhouse, one of our biggest hits. We plant all throughout, about after start second semester, we'll start potting plants and warming up the greenhouse, rehanging sprinklers. Then we start sales around May, Mother's Day, and students get to learn how to work, you know, with money, with people, and it's overall a good opportunity for people.
The Idly's Parade. The WFA puts together a hook for this parade. It helps spread awareness of our FFA program, and it's just a good time. Each year, we have won a trophy so far, so let's keep it going.
Pal, so upperclassmen, juniors and seniors, any available class, we will have elementary teachers bring their classes over, or we'll go over there. We'll teach them different things, a little fun, a little bit of education. So they'll have, here in our portal, we have something with the broiler chickens. We're teaching them a little bit about chickens and such. When we get sheep, we'll teach them about that, but, yep, we just educate the younger kids.
Almond Chicken Barbecue Day. We do this, and Mr. Thompson teaches us how to do quick preparedness safety. And the barbecue chicken comes from the broiler chickens that we just recently killed. And the almond day helps us just learn how to prepare things without getting, like, food poisoning and staying safe while smoking that has a good time.
Ag Day. So this will take place in the spring. It's basically Harvest Day, but it has to do with planting and still tractor safety. And then we'll have more animals at this one, since, you know, spring, you think of baby animals, and there will be more. But engages elementary class.
So state FFA convention. Those officers who are selected for the year and people who make it on through regionals from our chapter that do different green hand kind of meetings, competitions, score high enough, we'll go to state convention. It's basically just a smaller version of national convention, and all the chapters from the state will come together, meet, compete for state championships, and get together and become one larger FFA state camp.
Then we have our annual banquet. All the FFA students participate in this, and we all get together. It's like a feel-good, like, family time. And we do opening ceremonies as officers. We elect new officers each year. We do the annual tractor raffle there, and we do door prizes that businesses around Dougie donate to that, too.
So the tractor raffle. As said with the annual banquet, this is the raffle that we put on every year. So the Ag and Camp students will pick a select number of tractors, restore them, and get them to perceived condition like this one shown. And we will raffle them off throughout, we'll sell raffle tickets throughout the year. And then finally, the annual banquet will now go in.
Any questions?
Hi, I'm Jonathan Hedy, and we've done the FFA 2025, 2026, Chapter Sentinel. Yeah, I was in Ann Arbor, so I can see you all.
Boards, anybody have any questions?
I was just wondering about with the tractor that you were asking, how much, how much are you bringing in out there?
That really depends, because we sell raffle tickets for it. So, like, my freshman year, I went around selling raffle tickets, and I raised almost $300 for raffle tickets, and each student raises their own amount. So whatever amount you bring back, it's the amount you bring back for the FFA. And then you can pick between the tractor and cash prize that you win.
So there's one track?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And one of the things to keep in mind is that we have a top sellers kind of competition, where the top sellers of raffle tickets, like Cameron said, she sold about 300. There's a running competition between members for a cash prize or gift card prize that they can win if they sell them.
Anyone else?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say, well done. It was a good presentation. I appreciate that you're all well-prepared and just speaking to us naturally and not reading anything, which is really nice. And everybody looks great and sounded great and very mature and professional. Well done.
How many members do you have this year, approximately?
Around 155.
Thirty, 130.
That's a lot. Well, your team does great work, and you do a lot of great things for the community, for the school, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Warden, we had the review of the 2024-2025 audit. It's presented by Raymond. Raymond Group?
Good evening. All right. Let me see the presentations up on the screen. So my name is Daniel Clark. I'm the signing principal on-- I'm the signing principal on the audit. I worked with you for quite a few years. We did introduce a new principal this year, Dan Merritt. He had another obligation, actually a different school presentation. So tonight I'll be presenting, but Dan also worked with the school district as you'll see on the next couple of slides. So if you turn to the next slide, tonight we're going to be going over the June 30th, 2025 financial results. These are a couple of things that we're going to be looking at tonight. So go ahead and straight to slide three. Again, this was the team, I already mentioned Dan Merritt. Jen was the senior manager on the engagement and then Teresa supervised the staff. So again, we were happy to work with the district again this year. Slide number four goes right into the required board communications. So there are six of them tonight that we're going to go over just very briefly. First and foremost, we're happy to state that the district did receive an unmodified or clean opinion again this year. So this is exactly what you would be looking for from an audit standpoint. So, so everything you see in the financial statements that, that were provided to you are materially correct. And these are due to be submitted to the MDE, the Michigan Department of Education by the first and ever, which occurred. So we're happy to state that the district also met that important deadline as well. Number two, we are asked to just communicate any new accounting, new accounting pronouncements that may affect the way the financial statements were prepared. And this year there was one new standard, GASB 101. GASB stands for Government Accounting Standards Board, which is what we have to work under as far as for financial statement presentation purposes for governments such as school districts related to how compensated absences are calculated and what compensated absences are accrued vacation, sick and other comp balances. Number three, we are asked to assess the accounting estimates that are a part of preparing the financial statements. So obviously there's, there's estimates that go into calculating your pension and your other post-employment benefit plan that you are part of the state plan, depreciation expense, things like that. We assess those and deem those all to be appropriate and reasonable. Number four, we're happy to state there were no difficulties when performing that, the audit this year. So all the questions that were asked were answered appropriately. Documentation that we, that we requested was provided timely. And it usually is quite a bit of information that is part of the audit. So we do appreciate the finance team, Kim especially, for all the hard work that went into getting this done timely again this year. Number five, we're happy to state that there were no material misstatements as part of the audit. So the records that were provided to us were clean and didn't require any material changes. So again, that speaks to the record-keeping, the importance that the district puts on their financial position every month as they close, as well as the internal controls surrounding that. And then also happy to state there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as part of the audit. So again, that speaks to the high quality of what goes on here, how funds are spent, how cash is received, how things are reported, et cetera. We did have two other management letter comments. So, so again, these are not findings per se, they're just room for improvement, things that we bring to management that they can take a look at, decide how they're going to address it. We do follow up on these year to year. So again, if, if the, if the district corrects these this year, we will follow up on that, make sure that they're addressed and then they won't be noted in the future. With that, we can go straight to slide five. So as part of the audit, we also do what's called a single audit. And that is a special audit strictly over your federal funds that you receive and spend. So this year, a little different from years past is we have not officially issued the single audit, which usually comes as one package as part of the audit process. But because of the government shutdown, which hopefully will be ending here very shortly, we have to test based on what's called the, the compliance supplement, which is issued new every year. Sometimes there's significant things added, sometimes there are not. Our expectation is, is that there won't be a lot of new things added. In fact, all the testing over the federal programs is done and we are just waiting on them to finalize and issue that compliance supplement so we can then issue the single audit. So again, all the things that we needed to test, so as long as nothing changes in the new compliance supplement, that is unknown when that will be released. Typically it's released in the summer, so obviously plenty of time to get the audit done. But again, I just wanted to bring that up, that this is no fault of the district. In fact, all the districts in the state and throughout the country are waiting on this document and we will see how that progresses in the next few weeks. So we do do a program test. So this year we did test the child nutrition cluster. And so the district spends about 883,000 in federal funds this year. The one program we did test was 539,000 related to the child nutrition cluster. So all these documents related to this audit are in draft form. So we just want to let you know where this stood, but that has not been finalized as of tonight. All right, with that, I will move straight to financial results. So on slide six, if you're following along, the district had 81 or just over 81 million in assets at the end of 2025, the fiscal year, June 30th, compared to last year, you had 85.5 million in assets. So you, your assets went down about four and a half million. I'll just point out a couple of significant changes from year to year. So cash and investments, you had 18.7 million last year in cash investments. This year you had 10.9. Significant reason, actually the primary reason of this is you had bond funds that had not yet been spent at the end of last year to the tune of about seven and a half million dollars. So you invested significant dollars from that bond into infrastructure to the tune of about 7.5 million dollars. So that's why that dollar amount went, went down from 18.7 to 10. And then in the middle of the page, the net capital assets, that's what you spend that cash on. So your buildings, your infrastructure, buses, vehicles, et cetera. You will see that only went up about four and a half million. So you say, well, why didn't it go up seven and a half million that you just spoke to? Well, you do have what's called depreciation expense, which goes against any increase. That equated to about $3 million. So net increase was that four and a half million dollars. So I just wanted to point those two items out because both of those had significant shifts last year to this year. Next slide, which talks about the liabilities. So obviously the district does have liabilities that they carry from year to year. At the end of last year, the district had just over 74 million in liabilities. I'm sorry, this year, last year you had 82 million in liabilities. So your liabilities went down 8.3, which is always a good thing. A couple of items I will point to, your net pension liability. So your teachers, your administration that are in the plan, in the state plan, there's a calculation that's done based on if they were to retire, what that cost would be for the rest of their life. And that's a calculation that you get every year. That went down actually quite significantly. The pension plan at the state level, as did a lot of the plans throughout the country, did extremely well this year related to investment returns. So yours dropped about 8.3 million dollars, which is excellent. Again, this fluctuates up and down based on many factors, but that being the main driver this year. And then your long-term debt did go down about two and a half million. You did have a refunding this year of a 2015 bond, which gave some cost savings as far as interest, et cetera. And then you did pay off the annual principal payments on your other bonds to the tune of about two and a half million dollars. All right, I just spoke to the pension liability. So I'm on slide eight. This just shows a picture of what the pension liability has done over the last couple of years. So in 2025, all the way over to the right, I brought up that number before, 20.8 million is your pension liability. That smaller bar is what your annual required contribution is. So every year the district's required to pay into the pension plan. To the tune of this year, it was about 2.7 million dollars. Again, that fluctuates based on the funding percentage of the plan. And you'll see down right next to the 2025 number, you're 74% funded into the plan. So again, good results, both the funding percentage went up and the total liability, net liability went down. And then slide nine, the district also has what's called a net OPEB liability. So this would be retiree healthcare and other benefits. Interestingly enough, the last two years, this actually went from a liability to an asset, so which means the state plan has more assets in the plan than the expected liability, which is fantastic. So in 2025, you'll see you had a net OPEB asset of 3.4 million dollars. That's why that's negative because this is usually a, a positive liability. And, and the plan was 143% funded. So the contribution to this plan year over year, you, you contributed 835,000 into this OPEB plan. This will fluctuate again. The result of this again was the investment returns of this plan as well. So. Slide 10 then speaks to your equity position. So assets minus liabilities is your equity. It's split into these three different buckets. Net investment and capital assets represents 43% of your equity. 14% is restricted and then you have a negative 43%, which I'll talk about why that's negative for your unrestricted dollars. On the next slide, slide 11. So two of those components that I just spoke to of your net position or your equity, the first one is your net investment and capital assets, that top line that continues to go up. So you, you have 20.46 million in, in net investment and capital assets. So what that represents is it's the sum of the cost of all your facilities, all your equipment, minus any of the debt that's related to purchase it or construct it. So that means the assets of the district exceed the debt related to it by 20 and a half million dollars approximately. So if this continues to go up, this typically means that you're, you're, you're investing money in the district, your assets aren't aging as fast as they're depreciating. So again, due to that bond that was issued, obviously a couple of years ago, that's what the district has been doing over the last couple of years. That bottom line relates to your restricted dollars. So that did go up from 2.9 million to 6.5 million dollars this year. The reason for this change, as you've seen, it stayed relatively stable, but it popped up in this year to 6.5 million. Because you have a net OPEB asset, any of assets related to the asset have to be restricted because it's for a specific purpose for retiree healthcare. So when that's a liability, it doesn't hit this account because if it's negative, it goes in that unrestricted bucket, which we'll talk about next. But because you have an asset now, that's why it went up about $4 million. So then speaking of the unrestricted on slide 12, that bottom line shows what your unrestricted actually is. So it's negative $20 million. Now, the, the significant driver of why this is negative is related to your, your large pension liability. This is a very similar picture to all school districts throughout the state. So we also want to show what the impact of it would be without that pension liability. And if you look at that top line, you would be at 4.9 million in positive unrestricted. So again, it just shows the significant impact that, that the pension liability has on the district and all, all the districts throughout the state. Now we'll move into some revenue and expense analysis really quickly. So this is a picture of the last three years entity-wide. So obviously the district has multiple different funds that they work with, including the largest one being the general fund. But overall, the district brought in 29.1 million dollars in revenue this year. Very small decrease over last year, which we'll talk about that just briefly. And then expenditures were 24.5 million. Now you'll say, wow, the district added about four and a half million dollars to the bottom line. What I will tell you is the reason there's a significant difference between the revenue and the expense is that anytime you have significant improvements in that pension liability or the OPEB, it's actually counted as a negative expense. So that's why your expenses are showing significantly lower. So even though you added about four and a half million entity-wide, almost all that has to do with the investment returns of your pension and your OPEB, which you don't control. And obviously that's not necessarily additional dollars that the district can use. All right, slide 14, we will talk about major revenue line items. So the largest single revenue line item that the district receives obviously is the per pupil amount from the state calculated by a number of students times the per pupil rate that's approved by the state budget. You'll see over the last couple of years, it has continued to increase. You did see a small decrease year over year. And I know that says 24 twice, actually that, that last one is supposed to say 2025. So I apologize about that. But the district brought in 19 approximately 0.2 million dollars in state revenue sharing. Last year you had 19.7. So, so a decrease of approximately $500,000. Again, that fluctuates based on your student count, et cetera. But overall, very similar to last year and the year before. Slide 15, then the district also has three other different, smaller, although still significant and important line items. So you have property taxes. So that top line on slide 15 shows your property tax revenue increase year over year. Mostly this increases based on the real estate values as people, homes, as they appreciate. Obviously the tax related to that also increases. This can also change if you issue like a new levy, but this is primarily due to just that incremental change in real estate values. So the district did bring in 6.4 million in property taxes compared to 6.2 last year. So an increase of about 150,000. That very bottom line is your federal money. So you brought in about 906,000 in federal dollars compared to 917 last year. So that stayed almost exactly the same as last year. You'll see back from 2021, 22, 23, that was significantly higher primarily due to the COVID money, the SRF funds that you did receive, which are now completely spent. And now you're just back to the normal federal fund that you had been receiving pre-COVID. And then we'll talk just now briefly about the general fund on slide 14. So all the way over to the right, in 2025, the district brought in 22.6 or 22.7 million in revenue. They spent 21.4, so an increase of 1.2 million dollars. So you'll see the last three years, the district has added to fund balance this year and last year, a fairly significant amount. But if you compare that to an annual's worth of expenditures, obviously important, although it doesn't go very far anymore. In 2023, you were practically flat, so you only added about 122,000. And then the year before that, you, you used out of fund balance about 471,000. So the next slide on slide 17 just shows your fund balance as it has changed over the last couple of years. So fund balance all the way over to the right on, in the 2025 column, you're about 5.3 million in total fund balance and then 5.2 million in the unassigned or the spendable portion of that. So again, have added amounts more significantly from 22 to 24 and then from 24 to 25 then again. And then we like to compare what that actually represents to a year's worth of expenditures. So like, how many months do you have in your fund balance? So on slide 18, the last slide here, this shows you have about just shy of three months of fund balance in your, or fund expenditures in your fund balance in the general fund. So your, your, your general fund coverage ratio, as we call it, is at 24.8%. You'll see that did improve even over last year when you were at about 20% and significantly improved over 2023 when you were down to the low over the last five years of 10%. So the recommendation here that we like to see just for a typical school district of your size, usually three to four months is the target. You're right there at the three months. So I think that's a significant improvement and a good place to be. Typically you fall below the two months. You can deal with some cash flow issues, especially at the very beginning of a school year where you would have to short-term borrow, which I believe the, the school district has done in the past. So this shows that obviously the school district has, has, has put some importance in putting a little bit away to not have to do that and to be able to strategically make decisions so not to have to borrow short-term, et cetera. So. Lastly, slide 19 just shows some upcoming accounting pronouncements that are going to be applicable in the next year. We don't expect any impact on the district's financials with either of these, although most of these have to do with disclosures. So if you've spent any time looking at the voluminous amount of footnotes that your financials have, this will probably just add a couple more pages. But it won't change how, how things were calculated, similar to like the compensated absences pronouncement that we had to implement this year. But with that, that's the end of the official presentation, but happy to entertain any questions.
On a scale of one to 10, how would you rate Kim's performance? I'm just kidding. No, this is.
We really enjoyed working with Kim and we will say, not that I'm going to actually rate her here, but she does a really great job and we really appreciate the improvement that we've seen year over year since she has started. And this again continues to be an improvement over last year. So I think she will share that sentiment that this was easier than last year. And hopefully we will continue that route, so.
You don't look distressed, so that's good. Anyone else have questions?
No questions, but the numbers, it shows that you're doing a great job.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And if there are questions that come up afterwards, obviously Kim has our contact information. Feel free to reach out at any time. We're happy to sit down and answer any more nuanced questions if you don't want to ask them in like in this setting, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, take care. Have a good night.
All right, moving on to the middle school SPLT program.
Hello, I'm Erin Alston. I'm the middle school social worker and we are excited to bring the split program to split for short. SPLT is a student prevention leadership team. We're excited to bring it to our middle school. It's a countywide program. There's 24 middle schools and high schools in the county that have the split program already. Deb Chima leads it over here at the high school and we're going to kind of be an extension of that, but also our own entity. She said they are talking about having two representatives this year to join that. So this student prevention leadership team, just for basic information, the goal is to delay the onset of initial use and decrease any current substance use among youth. 90% of Americans with substance use disorder begin their use before age 18. So we want to try to start that prevention early, start introducing coping skills, introducing facts and how it impacts our bodies. We want to talk about having the conversation about refusal skills and peer pressure, which, you know, we work on all over in our social emotional curriculum. I work on it in my office with individual skills and this is just be another layer to add to that to help our kids. So we have over 600 kids in the county already, so we're going to add to that number. It's funded, we get our through the substance abuse, but most specifically Katie Demers is our representative for the county who kind of keeps us on task, make sure that we're doing everything the way we're supposed to. It's through initially the Community Mental Health Partnership of Southeast Michigan. So there's oversight and then oversight and oversight. It's evidence-based programming. It's been going on since 2015, so we just want to continue that here at the middle school. Some of the initiatives, I did this in the past and we've had speakers come in. We've done presentations, we've done visual programming. We have cahoots in the classroom, we have competitions between the classes. We're going to begin initially with the seventh and eighth graders as our representatives and then kind of do the, you know, simpler programming for the younger kids and and probably the seventh and eighth graders will lead that. It's all peer-to-peer substance abuse intervention and prevention information. So eventually we'll we'll get to grade, like a little bit more grade appropriate information for the younger kids. But we're going to start, since it's kind of newer to the middle school, we I think it was there before at one time and we're kind of revisiting it and I'm excited to do it. I got to do it before. I've been in the county, I've I've seen it at my daughter's school and I've seen it. I've led it myself and it was really fun to get the kids engaged and it means more. I don't know about you, but as a parent, I know sometimes they listen to their peers at that age more than they listen to their parents. So we want to have that, those messages going from those peers at this age. That's about it. Any questions for that?
Yes.
We are, we will be starting. So there's four initiatives. There's anti-vaping, anti-marijuana, anti-prescription drugs and anti-ender age drinking. So and they they have like a recommended format of how you present them, but really they give you flexibility. So starting soon, yes.
How does this tie in, if at all, does it tie in with DARE, what the kids are learning?
It's it's similar information, but it's more peer-led. So we will nominate and have president, vice president, secretary and treasurer. We'll have a social media representative to take the pictures and they'll all be the students. And then we will, we have already have some representatives that have shown or people that have shown interest when I've talked about it. So I'm excited to get that started.
Thank you.
Is this kind of a club sort of?
It's like a club. Yep, it's a student prevention leadership team, so it's a leadership team. We're we're teaching in teaching valuable information by sharing the prevention, but then we're also teaching them to be leaders, step up and take the reins.
Where will this instruction take place?
We're looking, well, we're looking to do it during lunches for the grades, so won't be. Yep, yep. And if we, we've had speakers in the past when I've done it before and when they come, you know, they'll they'll, we may have to use enrichment times once in a while, but mostly we'll try to keep it out of instructional time. We will send out informational, probably a letter right away. And then as the initiatives come up, let them know that this is an initiative that we're working on and that this information will be in the school, like whether it's posters, whether it's the coots in the classrooms. So parents are aware. Transparency will be key. Any other questions? I think you'll be excited. You're going to see some great things. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Going on to administration reports, we'll start with Riverside Academy.
Good evening. We're right in our race to the finish line for the end of our first trimester, which ends right before Thanksgiving break. So we've got a lot of students that are doing well, trying to get their classes done before the end of that deadline. Every year at Riverside, we try to do some different outreach programs where we get the kids learning in different environments. We try to do celebration, a presentation and a field trip. And then the next last week and then the next two weeks, we've had kind of one of each of those things. So I just want to share with you. The first one was the celebration. We had pumpkin carving on October 30th where the kids got to be kids for a day and carve pumpkins. A lot of them chose to paint them and we had them all outside, had a great time with that. And then last week we had Monroe County Health Team come in and talk about stress management tips for our students. Had some virtual kids attending that as well and had great conversation both during the presentation after from our students. And then the one we're really excited for is next Tuesday, going to the suburban showplace collection in Novi, where we're going to see the MI Career Quest Expo. In that we get to go to four different quadrants and learn some hands-on skills, kind of a job fair setting of advanced manufacturing, factoring, technology, healthcare and construction. Kids will actually get a chance to lay some bricks and mortar, get into rigging for lineman stuff, take their heartbeat, all of this kind of hands-on to get them kind of realizing what are some of the paths they can get into. We're expecting a big turnout from that. We actually get capped at the number of kids that we take, so we're going to take the maximum amount we can, which is 30, which is kind of, it's great because our kids are very interested in it. But we look forward to going at every year. That's all I have for you guys unless you guys have questions for me.
Any questions? Thank you. High school.
Good evening. November 1st, the Dundee High School Choir received perfect scores for their MSVMA festival. This completes a perfect sweep for our band and choir programs this year. Great job to Ms. Yeta, Ms. Sinclair and all the members of the band and choir. We've seen them up here, we've talked about them and they just continue excellence and it's it's really, we're really proud of them here at Dundee High School. Parent-teacher conference, day two is tomorrow from 3:30 to 6:30 in the high school cafeteria. Speaking of the band and choir, the choir festive dinner is December 6th, right here in our cafeterium. Soon hopefully in an auditorium, but right now it's in the cafeterium. High school band holiday concert is on December 10th, right here in the cafeterium. And we're getting ready to launch our community Christmas. It's a big, a big money push that we get donations. We're going to start that December 1st. We're going to collect for two weeks and then we're going to go ahead with our agreement with Toys for Tots and all the local churches. And I think this year there's going to be a larger number than we're used to. And then we plan to have deliveries for December 18th. I'll send information out if anybody's interested in delivering like we do every year. We always appreciate those. We don't allow students to deliver to families. We want to preserve the privacy of the families that we do assist. All the students do all the work before that and they'll load your cars and then we go off. And we generally do between 70 and 90 families in the greater Dundee area. So it's also summer field and there's a, we go outside of Dundee, but it's this area. Okay, so if you're interested in that, more information will be coming through your email. And then last week, FFA Olympics Assembly, or two weeks ago, was October 29th. And the FFA program, it's the largest student organization we have at the high school. 27% of the student body are members of the FFA, so it is the largest thing. So we do an FFA awareness assembly to continue to the agricultural awareness. And they have fun through it, like there's hay, hay, yeah, it's hay bale toss. They'll throw it up high in the air and then it explodes and tug of wars. And it's it's a pep assembly geared around FFA activities versus just your traditional homecoming activities. So that's always a big hit and we had that just two weeks ago. But pending any questions you have, that's all I have. It's really going to get busy at the high school when we start to get closer to Christmas and all these activities and events start to kick off.
What is the best way for people to donate to the community Christmas?
The best way to get the most money out of a donation to the people is to just drop off a check. We do do, we do do, we do a GoFundMe account, but we do lose a percentage of that just for the administrative transaction. So the best way to maximize any donation is just to drop off a check or cash at the main office. We collect it all and then we go ahead and we order hams, gift cards. And some families need a lot more extra assistance and we do give some personal care to those families that we do, we have identified that they do have a true need.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Middle school.
All right, good evening. Just tomorrow night is the second of two parent teacher conferences at the middle school. The first conference was last Thursday. This one is tomorrow and this one will go from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. First, last Thursday, we had quite a turnout, so that was good to see, hoping for the same tomorrow night. We've made a real point this year to really celebrate our Students of the Month program. We've had two so far. We've had September and October. In the moment, when we call the students' names, we take some photos, we provide them a small prize as well as a nice certificate that they can take home, give to parents. And then Ms. Sawyer and myself are talking about what the large, more significant prize will be, but we intend to get them all together at some point before the end of the school year and give kind of a nice, significant prize to really acknowledge their their positive contribution to the classroom and the learning environment. We have our big middle school snowball dance coming up on the 5th of December and this is for seventh and eighth grades. This will take place actually in the elementary school APR room. And again, that'll be from 5:30 to 7:00, so that's a Friday on December 5th and that's well chaperoned. And then lastly, today was the first day we sent eight of our fifth grade students over to the Ed Center. These students are participating in the peer-to-peer program that's being put on by the Ed Center. And what they're doing is they are helping our Ed Center students prepare for a big music concert towards the end of the year. So they took some photos over there, they sent them back to me and the kids were really engaging and and doing some good work over there to to help those kids get ready. So it's nice to see. Any questions? All right, thanks.
Elementary school.
Good evening. So the last month has been pretty busy and we're getting ready to amp up for the busy holiday season as well. We finished up the month of October and celebrated our PBIS winners with donuts and cider. Another awesome thing was during October, all of our classes were able to visit the fire station. Each of them got to practice a different area or topic, I guess, of fire safety for that month. Some of them made a fire escape plan, some of them practiced opening and going out windows, just all different things, getting low for the smoke, stop, drop and roll. So it was all mostly age appropriate based on what grade they were in. And then we also participated in walk to school with a firefighter and that was a lot of fun. We we had a really big turnout of students and their families joining us for that. We did participate in the FFA Harvest Day with the high school students over here in the parking lot. Our our littles always love those days and soak up all the attention and fun from the high schoolers. Unfortunately, the weather was not very cooperative on Halloween, so we didn't get to have our usual Halloween parade. But this is my fourth year here and it's the first time we've had to have it indoors, so that's not too bad. Hopefully next year it'll be a little more cooperative, but we did make the best of it and we paraded through the school and all the students at least got to see each other's costumes and all of the staff costumes too, so that was fun. We just finished up some staff professional learning on our Courageous Choices curriculum, just refreshing teachers with that. Margot and Jenny from the ISD, they came and did a lot of work with our teachers on the books that pair with the curriculum and how to incorporate those into the classroom and kind of got our teachers refreshed and excited about teaching that again. And then we really spent some time focusing on our practices with our students with special needs. Currently, our first grade teachers are collaborating with our STEAM teacher, Ms. Trudeau, and they're working on a big Thanksgiving Day project. So they're reading the book Balloons Over Broadway and then in STEAM they are planning out and building their own balloon creations and then they will parade those through the school the week before Thanksgiving. Currently, we're hosting the statewide literacy coaching institute in our library. It's all week long. We have a coaching team facilitating it from leaders around the state and then coaches from different districts all over the state coming to participate in that cohort. And so there's a lot of really good learning going on and then they're using our teachers and students to practice those literacy coaching skills. So that's pretty exciting to to have them in our building. We're looking forward to that learning and the outcomes of that. Tomorrow's our Veterans Day Parade at 9 o'clock. That's always a good time. It's where your red, white and blue day. We'll have our mentor mentee group coming up toward the end of this month. The 21st is the end of our first trimester, which this is our first year doing trimesters. And so our conferences will be on December 1st. And I think that's finally the end. Any questions?
I don't have any. Anybody have any questions?
Sure.
I remember coming into the gymnasium for years and years, like 60 years, to watch the kids come with their costumes.
Oh, yeah.
And so now that it's out on the sidewalk, who knew that the rain would, you know, cause a disruption?
Yeah.
And I just, the community goodwill garnered from that. I mean, I can remember that whole gymnasium field. I don't know what it holds, maybe 300 people.
Yeah, one, it's not enough now with 750 students times that many family members and community members. Also, it's it's a big safety risk because we wouldn't be able to check in that many people that quickly for the volume of people that would be coming in. So to us, it's more of a security risk to just let, you know, a thousand or more people in.
Than your Christmas holiday sing-along or things like that, that would be considered a different safety risk?
Those are after hours, so the building isn't full of students at that time, students and staff.
Okay, I just, it's unfortunate because I think the community goodwill garnered from that outweighs.
Safety?
I was there even during COVID.
Yeah, it's just my opinion.
And there was like 300 people there and, you know, we were all afraid because of COVID, but we still didn't hate it happen. But that's just, I feel bad because warm and fuzzy feelings from the community, so it's a good thing as far as I'm concerned. warm and fuzzy feelings from the community, so it's a good thing as far as I'm concerned.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to informational items, financials. Ms. Warden? Nothing? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for, other than congratulations? Thank you very much for the hard work on the audit. Thank you. Moving on to agenda, to approve the November tenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting agenda as presented. I'll need a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I do have, there was an addition to the consent agenda. I don't know if I've already delivered that. We had a last second resignation letter from Christie Rogers, so I just wanted to make sure that was.
When was that added?
What time did you email me? Yeah, so it was just recently added. She cannot talk too much about it because it hasn't been official yet, but she's been made an offer that she can't refuse. So she's going to be moving.
And it really gets to like better in your English form. Not to contradict you lightly.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. So we will add that to the agenda. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say nay. Motion passed. Consent agenda, approval of the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Approval of the general fund operational and internal accounts invoices. Accept the resignation of Brittany Fugate, GSRP Teaching Assistant. Accept the retirement letter of Jenny Wilson. Approval of the FFA program of activities as presented. And approval of the Monroe County Great Start Writing Program. Subrecipient, subrecipient agreement as presented and acceptance of the, how would I read that? Accept the resignation of Ms. Christie Rogers. I need a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say nay. Motion passed. Onto new business, personnel. The hiring of elementary independent facilitator to approve Sherry Halick as a new elementary independent facilitator and hourly rate and benefits as outlined in the current DESPA contract. I'll need a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Can you explain what an elementary independent facilitator is?
They work with a student special. They are assigned to a student.
Okay.
It's a special position.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, falls under DESPA and about eighty-five percent of the degree first.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say nay. Motion passed. M C I S D Technology Enhancement Millage Resolutions to approve the M C I S D Technology Enhancement Millage Resolution as presented. I'll need a motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is to support the I S D in putting this resolution on the ballot. Then we will come back and then support the initiative that's on the ballot. But this is just the initial to put it on the Tuesday, May fifth, two thousand twenty-six ballot. And of course, this has been going on at this technology launch for well over twenty years. It's a blessing.
Is it a renewal or is it an increase?
It's a renewal.
And how much is it?
Nine point nine eight six six.
So nine point eight?
Nine point nine eight.
Oh, point nine, okay.
So it's a renewal.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say nay. Motion passed. Power School Litigation Agreement, to approve the Power School Litigation Agreement as presented. I'll need a motion in a second. Any discussion? Yeah, please.
S I S Student Information System. However, we use a piece of software that Power School has. There's, they had the data breach and there is a pretty large lawsuit that we are just kind of jumping on. Any amount of money we would get, the lawyers that are litigating it would get a chunk. I don't anticipate a lot because we have just a, we don't have the big system, but.
So this is to sign on, on the federal class action?
Correct, correct.
And if they prevail, what, what would we do if the money isn't going to flow into the general fund? What is it going to be used for?
Um, my guess would be that piece of our software. So it'd just go back in the general fund.
And how were the people that were hurt by who, the information did?
We don't have that information. We don't even, we don't even know if any of our data was accessed. It was an overwhelming one, but we don't know that information.
So an individual can't expect anything?
No, no.
Seeing none, all those in favor, students in favor saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passed. Food service purchases to approve the
Sorry, school food service purchases to approve the food service equipment purchase from S S Kemp at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand, six hundred and one dollars and eighty-six cents. I need a motion.
That's not the amount. Yeah, it's been updated over eighteen thousand.
Here you go. In the total amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred, sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Don't move. Any discussion?
Scott, do you want to say what was added? About four thousand was added today.
Well, number one, just I could tell you where, like there's two panino wells that are going to be added to the school. There is a, very good. And, and if I read, I go ahead, please.
All right, so the first of all, first of all, the one that I'm calling is added. So they're giving me a term into the high school. There's a food warmer, I'm going to the elementary, there's a work site that's going to the high school. There's ice cream, work site that's coming to the high school. Each building is getting a food processor. Little school, high school is getting a play case for the kettle and then the heat warmer for the high school, the cooling machine. Um, we think the wording, yes, it goes as a flush machine, but it's going to be a smoothing machine for the high school. And then smaller is for pizza and butter and cheese. The amount in the quote, is it two thousand dollars for smaller? But if they want these to add, they want to see the two thousand dollars for smaller.
Gotcha.
So basically I've been identifying with the items, making it a whole eighteen thousand dollars.
Eighteen. And I'll remember, this is out of our food service fund balance, not of the general fund.
That's what I was just about to ask, do they still have a big budget? They have to spend down?
They have to spend seventy-five thousand. So, um, but next year another, one of the large businesses will be coming and then they get more step on it, so I did an included.
We can probably expect another year because of free breakfast and lunch, that we will have this surplus that we'll have to at least spend down to a certain amount too.
And you'll see in the audit that it's been verbal findings. So there's actual countdown, but all the schools have it. It's really hard to track in the picture of that nine, six, thirty. But verbal, it's not an exclusive finding. We said so six thirty and twenty-six to fund it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passed. Designation of credit card use to authorize the executive assistant to superintendent. Angie Beckala. Are you sure you're left there? Beckala, sorry. Angie Beckala, the use of the district credit card for the district, the district purposes.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passed. GSRP salary increases to approve the salary increases of the GSRP staff as presented. Second. Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion?
These recommendations are from Ms. Love and the I S D working together. The I S D funds GSRP. And so they are, they're administrative contracts, if you want to call it that. They're not administrators, but they're administrative contracts and it's within the budget.
Okay?
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passed. First reading of policy numbers fourteen twenty-two, fourteen twenty-two point oh two rescind. Sixteen twenty-three, sixteen sixty-two rescind. Twenty-two sixty, twenty-two sixty point oh one. Thirty-one twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-two point oh two rescind. Thirty-one twenty-three, thirty-three sixty-two rescind. Forty-one twenty-two rescind, forty-one twenty-two point oh two, forty-one twenty-three and forty-three sixty-two rescind. Is there any discussion? The second reading and action will be done at the separate meeting, so it's time to ask questions or review. Go ahead.
Okay, so.
We talked in the mic.
Yep. I'm not sure about, I might not be reading it correctly. Forty-three sixty-two had, was a lot of stuff about anti-harassment, which I don't want to lose that part, right? So I'm thinking it moved up to thirty-one twenty-two, but I'm not sure. Is, where's that?
Anything that was rescinded was then put into other policies. It was meant to clean up. It was, Neola had a request by some districts to merge some stuff together. So none of that language was lost. It was moved into an appropriate, that's where there's additions. You can find that that, that almost identical wording is found somewhere else.
It was dropped somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
Absolutely.
So everything that's being rescinded, is it, is that language in?
It's in one of the
That are listed here?
Yes, correct. That's, that's part of the revisions or new policy altogether.
And it came, the recommendations came from Neola?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Again, that was the first reading, so we'll take action in the separate board meeting.
If you have any questions in between that time, just let me know. All right, first of all, I thank the board and their support as we worked through my first year. Certainly a big factor in there is Ms. Kim Warden. So Kim's hard work, her ability to say no. And just, you know, it, I've always said that if you don't know what you have, you don't spend wisely. When you do know what you have, then you make wise decisions. And Kim has done an amazing job in the time she's here cleaning up our books. And again, we're peeling back that onion every so often, but we are in great shape. Not only law wise, you know, he said it was a clean audit. Hats off to you, Kim. But, you know, we're at a place where we want to be. So then we can now, we're safe to make decisions year to year. If the state throws us a curve ball and doesn't give us as much, you know, money, which net, they did this year a little bit. So we, you know, but we're able to make adjustments and we'll, we'll be able to stay safe. So it's a good feeling. I appreciate Kim and her efforts and the board's support in that. So I just think it's great news.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passed. State school aid at seven thirty-one A A. To approve the state school aid at seven thirty-one A A. Updated resolution as presented.
Before we close.
I'll second it.
Either. And opt out.
To play a decision. We do not have all the information that's coming as council and like after that.
Possibility of a emergency meeting if necessary. This is a unique situation that Um, there's some deep concerns we have and understand that this is safety and security. Hundred thousand dollars, Kim. If we opt out, we lose.
And we use this option to apply for competitive grants, which is where competing with other districts for a pocket money. So.
Is there specific types of grants or is it just all grants? Okay.
In this, it'd be school nurses, social workers, I mean, the list. I think something from airport, I don't know, it's on different level. It says the allowable expenses for this of schools. Counselors, school nurses, medical house bringing tools, health care coordinating platforms, training, evaluation, crisis response, education, infrastructure, families, school seat, management system. I believe there are also the partnership.
Liaisons and stuff like that.
So that's the money we're talking about, that if we opt out, we may, in two words, may. Governor's office, you know, probably for the general time. And the struggles they had in one of three of us. Different malaria disaster situation, the N S U campus shooting, and then the hospital. There were issues that they had including for nothing good, there were the destruction of the state. So this is their know, at this time, in rural counties, there are fifty thousand dollars, different to most, there's a lot of, there is, on the other side, some movement going on that maybe.
This will change. They originally had a deadline mid-November, then it moved back to the end of November, and.
Within that time, that we have to, you know, significantly changes to the legislation when money occurs, that might make it more probable. These are those screens attached that we talked about that are kind of scary. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't really articulate it. I've had it in, in terms of, I've been told that government immunity is not a question. But everything is kind of just a couple of emergency issues, so I would anticipate more discussions and possible actions and answers that might make postponing the decision of life choice, because we might be most likely to have a clearer understanding of what happened here, or what happened to the federal funds, and some of that options we get at that point, or what the true impact of options is.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that we table it. I don't know if other board members have re, done their research or talked to Brad Banasik or their personal attorneys, but this was a big topic at the M.A.S.B. annual, excuse me, annual convention last month in Traverse City. Lots of boards are talking about not doing it. There is a lot of money at risk here on the line for sure, but losing attorney-client privilege and opening us up to personal liability is pretty serious also. So I would hope that we could do some more research and maybe the national or the state level conversation will make things a little clearer in that time, hopefully, and maybe Brad can get back to us.
I'm agreeing at one hundred percent.
I'll be very honest, it's hard to be legal level, but what I do understand is that there's a lot of pressure right now on Lansing and the legislature to perhaps change the wording so that some of the things that are very conservative, everything board on administration alike, might be cleared out. It might be, it might just be, I don't think it's a lot of, like, and unfortunately, it's changing. This is hot for subject as you forget. Like, there's no way you can prepare for exactly where we're having.
So I think M.A.S.B.'s working to, their lobbyists and people are, yeah.
Yes, and I think they are making some progress.
Okay.
And it sounds like they were seriously considering some of the, okay, but I would like.
I move to table.
Well, we should close first. So we should close the discussion. So, any other comments? I like your parents, you know, I'm not a lawyer either, but I actually kind of sense and I don't feel personally, so. Any other discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay, so all of the favor say aye. All those opposed say nay.
None.
I'd like to make a motion to table the topic till the December meeting, or anyone to say. Okay, I'd like to table it. Hope we'll table it.
The motion could be till December, though, right? And we can always call, or, oh, I see, right.
If you just say table it for a moment, and then, yes, we give information if something changes, hopefully they will push it back to December, and that would be fine, if not it's May, take a, and they shoot.
Okay, right.
Go ahead, second.
Second, go ahead.
Any other discussion? Say none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passed. The first person to vote will be approved through the state's proposal at cost of three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars from the state's first grant, and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars from the state's funding, three hundred, three million dollars.
Motion, second.
Any other discussion?
Would this, would this take care of all the funds now?
Well, yeah, they're not strictly on a, so like, we have a little area around, but they're not strictly on, but yeah, all, really not in the hallway or anything here, all the students will be taking care of, if you approve the higher amount.
I can get into that if you want me to.
The cafeteria will have filtered, that's needed.
So the higher amount, we, we received a filter first grant that covered all the like hallway water dispensers filtering, filter, having filtered water. Where the additional cost comes in is our bubblers, which is in the elementary level where they have a sink and then you got the little faucet, right? The, the ones, the new bubblers are of good metal, they just need to be filtered, but in the K and first grade wing, they are material that needs to be replaced and then filtered. And it would be my recommendation to do that instead of capping it off and having those kids go out into the hallways. If you've ever tried to get kindergarteners to do anything in the same direction, it's a, it's a task in itself. But that's where this funding is, that's where this cost is coming from. They, the bubblers were not allowed to be included in the grant. So it's something that we have to do, and I, I just think it's the right thing to do. Keep those in the, in the classroom so those kids can not leave the classroom.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I appreciate you adding those.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passed.
Yeah, pleased with the final audit. Hats off again to Kim. Nice job. I am, I am a little concerned about the slowing down economy. Our, a great deal of our funding for the state comes from the six percent sales tax, and just a little concerning that it's, the economy's starting to slow down. I am excited to say that with the final audit, our professional staff have, that has triggered a thousand dollar stipend that will be given to them in what date, Kim? January stipend, the hundred?
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth, the hundred, a thousand dollar stipend on January twenty-fifth. So we're excited that, that we can make that happen. Winter sports are starting. Here we go. Brian and I and Ross Crowe attended the wrestling parents meeting and that went well. It was well done. Reminder that Thursday, December fourth, Dr. Green will return to facilitate the evaluation of the superintendent. And trying to see if they got anything else. I think that's it.
Question, comment, discussion, board comments?
And one more, I forgot, sorry. Again, publicly, I'd like to thank Jenny for her service. You know, you're talking about someone that has been around since March twenty-eighth, two thousand, in a capacity of a volunteer or substitute secretary, then took over in, what was it, two thousand four, is that what, five, as the secretary in the middle school. God bless her soul there for that one. And then in two thousand seven, has run the central office absolutely amazingly. So Jenny, thank you so much for your service to Dundee Community Schools. We appreciate you and we will miss you.
I want to say thank you, too. I did not enjoy voting to accept your resignation, I might add, but yeah, thank you. You've helped me as a board member with so many things and wish you well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And a pleasure, and a pleasure.
And I told you once already, but you do make this job a little easier with all this. So thank you for helping keep me organized and on track, and I just appreciate your service over all the years. And I also want to say thank you, Ms. Rogers, for being here and, and supporting our district. And it sounds like your new role may continue to help for us in one way or another, so.
Yeah, I would say it's kind of just expanding off of what the child has seen a little bit, and help that you're now, Dundee and forces, the other schools that are, you know, right in, you know, that, so I am, I stay out because I really enjoy being at the elementary and I really do a lot of work in here, but I am excited for the things that are coming through the community as a whole.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I want to thank Kim. Sure is a pleasure to listen to auditor talk and not have to try and protect the business office. And we see, when we, when we see the numbers, we believe it now. It is a lot of help. I want to thank Jenny. I worked with her for years and worked with her in the, the board. She's been a big help, you know? Hopefully Angie can pick it up so I won't have to call and say, hey, missed something on the agenda. That's all I got.
I also want to congratulate Kim on great job done, and I'm so happy with her way of finances look. And I want to congratulate Jenny again. And then also I wanted to ask about, do we have our staff issued, uh, district phone? Do we have staff issued, staff or district issued phones for staff?
For some, yes.
Okay, because I'm just wondering if that might solve the problem with, students seem to have a relationship with one of our staff. That might solve the problem that she can, if she's willing to be a phone call away.
Any other comments? All right. This was the greater board meeting. We're going to close session, a close session for the purpose of superintendent's evaluation. If you want to be close session, the purpose of superintendent's evaluation, I need a motion in a second. Don't move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do we have a five minute break?
Yes.
Please.
Yes, please.
Any other who can say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passed.